Thank you. I now call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
The coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Valance?
Here.
Mr. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
I would now like to recognize a young man who has been to so many board meetings I couldn't tell you how many he's been to, Rod Waddell, who graduated today.
Hey.
So, we're very proud of you and thank you for all you've done for us as a board, and you're always here on time, and great job. So, we will stand and applaud. All right, all right. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. And Kathy, are you doing that?
Yeah.
All right, great.
Hey, Kathy.
I don't see Earl.
I'll do my best Earl impression.
Okay.
Bear with me.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening. Rockford Public Schools is fortunate to have support from such a giving community. Tonight, we'll recognize three organizations that have supported RPS 205 for several years. First up, we have First Free. For the past four years, First Free Rockford has hosted an annual concert called Restart to benefit Rockford Public Schools. The goal each year is to not only restart Rockford, but to have fun and invest in Rockford students. This year's featured artist was Matthew West, and the concert raised more than $12,000 for RPS 205. The annual event is in addition to the generous support First Free provides our students throughout the year.
Yeah.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't organize her.
Okay.
We would not embrace that much.
Okay. Great.
Next up, we want to recognize iRead. The United Way of Rock River Valley partnered with the Literacy Council this year to better support our community and its students through the iRead program. iRead matches volunteer reading mentors with kindergarten students and prepares students to read proficiently by fourth grade. Volunteers might tutor one student each week, or as many as three or four, and work on letters, sight words, spelling, and reading. Volunteers are encouraged to stick with those same students through the end of their third grade year, and fortunately for us, many volunteers do exactly that. This year, 158 iRead volunteers worked in our schools, providing some much-needed individual attention during the school day. So, thank you to iRead. Thank you. Welcome to Rockford.
Thank you, of course.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful to be part of it.
My sister coordinates the iRead thing at Westview.
Oh, Gail?
Gail, that's my sister. That's my sister.
I love her. She is my favorite.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, we have Rockford Reads here tonight. And if our records are correct, we just finished... The 15th year, Bob, yes? The 15th school year that Rockford Reads volunteers have been working with our students. The program also focuses on reading to students and helping students read to volunteers, plus giving students another positive mentor and role model to provide individual attention during the school day. Longtime program coordinator Bob Pressman, who is here tonight, started Rockford Reads through the Rotary Club, and this past school year, 171 volunteers worked in RPS 205 through the program. Thank you.
Greatly appreciated, Bob. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And we'll do one more round of applause for all three groups and for all their support that they have given us over the years. Thank you. Of course.
With Rockford Reads, I just want to recognize Marcia Sizney and her staff, Amy Extrem and everybody. I do practically nothing. They do all the hard work. You have a real treasure here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. That is all.
Well, on behalf of the board, I want to thank all of you for the volunteering that you and your group do. It's just absolutely amazing to see. And Marcia gets to report on those hours of volunteering every year, and that number just keeps climbing. So, we're very, very thrilled about that. So, thank you all so much. We are now on to the petitions and communications portions of our meeting. When we invite the public to make comments, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to our Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the board and to conduct our meeting in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the board. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names up, so if the second person would come up to the front, we can devote the most time to our public comments. If you look at the clock on the wall here, our coordinator will run the clock to help you with your two-minute of timing. We thank you for your interest and for your cooperation with our guidelines. So, our first speaker tonight is Peter Williams, to be followed by attorney Afshan Khan. And Peter, if you would hit the button on the microphone there to turn it on.
Afshan, you first.
Oh, that's fine. Okay.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Good evening, Board. My name is Afshan Khan. I'm attorney here in Loves Park, and I am the attorney for my client, Reverend Peter Williams. Now, it's come to our attention that he's been...his termination has been recommended to this board, and we obviously oppose this, and we wish to have a time to meet with you to reconsider this recommendation. We feel, based on reviewing the information and talking to individuals who are involved in this recommended termination, the allegations themselves are false, that there wasn't given any due process, a lack of due process for my client, as well as the investigation itself was very improperly done. I did send a letter to the board discussing more detail as to what the allegations were, what was involved in terms of the investigation, and discussing sort of why we feel by the position that we're taking now. We hope that we do have a time to speak with you, so we can go over this and hopefully come up to an applicable solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Peter?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on today. I was looking forward to coming back to District 205 on next year as the CTE instructor at Auburn High School, as Ms. Janice Hawkins, the principal, had asked me to come back on next year to be the engineering instructor. I had met with Mr. RJ Kuligowski to get a five-year provisional certificate so that I can come back and teach at Auburn High School and actually at Jefferson also. And I love children, and I have had a longstanding relationship with children and helping children. And I'm going to brag a little bit. I'm actually very good with children. These allegations are patently false. Through this entire process, I was not given due process. I asked many questions, and not one of my questions was ever answered by the RPS 205 staff. I asked a simple question, what district board policy have I violated? And I never got one response about what policy I had violated. I asked them again, over and over again, and they never once in the two- or three- or four-month period of this investigation did they ever tell me what I was charged with. And then, I finally received a letter from Sarah Jeski saying that I was being...my position was being terminated, and because of...she said because of falsification of my original application, and then because of violating District Policy 6.8. I had never heard any of that before she sent this termination letter. I have had a longstanding relationship with the Freeport School District for over 20 years, and you all know that we had three memorandums, and I'm the only person that signed all three memorandums. And then, this will be a black mark on my record. In my 40-year history, I never had any black mark on my record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Next is Dr. Dennis Thompson, past superintendent of RPS 205.
Mr. Deputy Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Next year, the Rockford School District will open a new school in the Cherry Valley area. And as my understanding, this school has not officially been named yet, so my purpose in speaking this evening is to recommend the name to you. With that said, I would recommend the board...the new school be named Leonard B. Keller Elementary School, and I submit the following in support of that recommendation. Leonard Keller was born in Rockford in 1947 and raised his entire life here. He attended Cherry Valley School through the eighth grade, and then later attended Guilford High School. He was drafted into the Army in 1966, and then subsequently deployed to Vietnam in early 1967. On May 2nd, 1967, while serving as an infantryman in A Company, 3rd Battalion, 60th Infantry, 9th Infantry Division, doing a reconnaissance and force mission by his unit in the Op Bakh region of Vietnam, his unit came under intense enemy fire from a well-concealed Viet Cong enemy fortified position. Many of the unit's leaders were initially killed or wounded in the initial phase of the ambush. Seeing the potential for significantly higher casualties if nothing was done, Keller recruited another soldier to join him, and they subsequently assaulted and destroyed six enemy heavy weapons bunkers, thus saving the lives of numerous of their comrades that day. His actions were key in preventing further loss of life. Leonard Keller's actions that day have been described by at least two military historians as one of the five most heroic actions of the Vietnam War. In September 1968, Leonard Keller was awarded the Medal of Honor by President Johnson in the East Room of the White House. Mr. Keller went on to a distinguished service career in the federal civil service, ultimately becoming a supervisor in supply management at the Pensacola Naval Air Station in Florida. However, he was tragically killed in a motorcycle accident outside his home in Milton, Florida in October in 2009. The award of the Medal of Honor is a significant event. It requires the recipient to consciously put forth and risk their life in order to save others. Leonard Keller is the only person born and raised in Rockford, Illinois, to receive the Medal of Honor.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I'm sorry. Your time is up, so...
With the board chairman's position, may I leave this?
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Are there any board member comments at this time? Can I have somebody jump up? Turn that microphone off there. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay. No board...Mr. Valance, I'm sorry.
At the last board meeting, we approved, as part of our consent agenda, raises for the administration. And I've come to realize, and probably a little too late, we should have talked about it at the last board meeting when we're doing it, because when we do these things, just as part of the consent agenda, and we don't talk about them, and we don't provide some sort of a context, I think it just creates space for people to say things that may not necessarily be true, particularly, you know, comments about massive raises for the administration. So, I want to belatedly provide, into an empty, largely empty room, some context to what we actually did.
Thousands watching on TV.
I'm sure.
Okay.
So, what we did at the last board meeting, when we approved those administration raises for the administration, and these were really raises for all of the employees who are not members of the union, we gave the administration a pool of money representing 1.9% of their compensation, and allowed them to use that for raises. So, the aggregate raise amount for the administration was 1.9%. And in comparison, the average wages that we just agreed to with the bus drivers, the average wage increase was 8.59%, and the proposal that we have unilaterally implemented with both the paraprofessionals and nutrition service workers was 3%. Now, I will provide this caveat. What the administration did with that 1.9% pool is they gave a 1.5% increase to everyone, and then they took that other 4% and they used it to...sorry, 0.4%, thank you very much, 0.4% to give higher raises to some people. And I've had this conversation with people before as well. So, you can find people within that group of employees who received larger wages, and, you know, that's what happens, is that people pick out whoever seems to have gotten the largest raise, but the aggregate was 1.9%. And I've said this privately, and I'll say it publicly. If there's any bargaining groups that want to make us the same offer, that say, "Allow the administration to set an average," and then allow the administration to decide how to allocate that money among the employees, I'd certainly support that. But otherwise, you know, don't pick out the people who have the largest raises and only talk about them. Let's provide a little context, and it was a 1.9% raise. And while we're on the topic, and while we're probably going to have a short meeting, that leads to the comments about the bloated administration. You know, bloated in what context, and, you know, and what proof do you have that the administration is bloated? I'll tell you that I've got a couple of external data points on that that I can share, and I'm going to share. One's specific, and one's a little bit more general. So, this is a series of communications I had with a former employee who very specifically was claiming that our human resources department was much larger than it needed to be, and she was using numbers that were inflated by a factor of about five. I pointed out to her that our organizational charts are actually available online. You can go to our website. You can see exactly how many people we have in each department and what positions they have, and that her numbers were off by about a factor of five. I also made the comment to her that for an organization our size, and we are the largest employer in Winnebago County, and I think we're the second largest in a multi-county area behind now only Chrysler, our HR department didn't appear to me to be that large, but that I really didn't have any frame of reference, and I admitted that. And she actually did the research and sent back to me an industry formula that she had found that said how many HR generalists any organization should have based on the size of their...the number of employees that they have. What she didn't do was run the formula. So, I ran the formula and sent it back to her and showed her that if you ran that formula, it actually shows that our HR department is probably understaffed. And that was the last communication I had from her. The second piece of data point that I've got is...has to do with...we started this process with the REA in the last round of bargaining with them called interest-based bargaining. And as part of that process, what we've done with them has been very open and transparent. We've opened our books to them. The Illinois Education Association has two financial experts on staff, and those people do nothing but review the financial statements and the budgets of school districts around the state, and they're also get involved in state-level school finance issues. And as part of that process, which I'm not participating in this time, but I participated in the last round, they brought in one of those financial experts who looked through our budget, spent as much time as he wanted, had all of his questions answered. He sat through a day of our discussions with the REA, and this is a sort of a negative statement. He was obviously looking for areas to find money, and he did not, at any point, say that our administration was bloated, or that we were spending too much on administration. In fact, the only suggestion that he came up with was that we should raise...that we...he didn't say should. He said that we could raise taxes. That was his only suggestion for finding more revenue. Now, I'm not involved in the IBB process this time, but I do know that same financial expert came in this time because he came to one of the finance committee meetings that I was chairing, and we chatted ahead of time. I have not heard that he's said anything differently this time, and if there's anybody who's been involved in that who would like to illuminate that. So, why am I doing this? I guess one is, I just want to get the facts out there. And secondly, you know, I'm going to say, I do pay attention to some of the rhetoric that gets used. I pay attention to rhetoric at the national level. I don't like the rhetoric that's going on at the national level. I don't like the rhetoric that goes on at the state level. And I think that one of the reasons people get away with it is because we seem to be raising generations of people who are not critical thinkers. We are involved in an organization whose mission really is to create critical thinkers. And so, I'm going to ask people to do is, when people make statements and use words like "massive" and "bloated," I will ask you, as people who are involved in an organization that is dedicated to creating critical thinkers, to ask critical questions. What do you mean by that? What is your context? What is your comparison? What numbers are you actually talking about? And I think that...I think we'll all achieve a better result if we do that, and we'll have better conversations, and I think we can do that. Thanks.
Any other board member comments at this time? If not, then we'll move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items, the meeting minutes from June 27th and the June 17th Strategic Planning Meeting of the Board, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid pay request log, and travel, the bid recommendation for Nashville Elementary School replacement...roof replacement. Excuse me. Not the replacement of the school, just the roof. Okay. Recurring contracts for certified speech and language pathologists for...with advanced medical, the Chance Light Therapeutic Day School, the other consent items, including a worker's compensation settlement agreement, the annual approval of the Title I plans, the AT&amp;T settlement agreement on telecommunications services, the memorandum of understanding for new teacher mentoring, and the district band and choir and chorus memorandum of understanding, as well as the educational leave, Section 2 for Local 692 of the Council 31 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, and the Freedom of Information Log. Does there a motion and second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Segal?
7E.
7E, okay. Any others? Ms. McCulloch? 10C, okay.
10F.
And 10F. Any others? Got one more?
Yeah, one more. 10B.
B? Okay. All right. Okay. I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Valance?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next, I'll call for a motion and a second on item 7E, which is the contracts under 10,000.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Discussion or questions? Mr. Segal?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that it was really nice to see in the documentation a little more description about what these contracts were. It gives me a little more context as to how these amounts are being spent. I know they're not huge amounts, but it is kind of cool to see where they all go, rather than just saying it's for purchase order, whatever, but to actually see who they're going to and for what. So, thank you, whoever added that.
That information is also in Ms. Holdley's report that she sends out every month as well, so...okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Now, the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 7E, contracts under 10,000.
Mr. Valance?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. I will now take a motion and a second to approve item 10B, which is the annual approval of the Title I plans.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions, comments, or discussion? Mr. Segal?
Yeah, I thought the information was great in all of these plans. Just wondering why the format wasn't more standardized. It seemed like there was a lot easier to track what each school is doing.
Great question. We agree with you, and I think that ISB will review that going forward. Because of, as previously mentioned, rhetoric and changes at the federal level, the state released the information that was needed to move forward with Title I plans to access FY-18 dollars, which started July 1. They didn't have a tool... to access FY-18 dollars, which started July 1. They didn't have a tool, they didn't have a template. And so, they delivered the prompts that needed to be answered and addressed. That's what we've been working with schools with. Part of that is what caused only part of the schools to be here tonight. The other plans will come on August 8. We're working on that with our partners at ISB.
You do expect that future documentation will all have kind of a template built? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Wolf? Okay, thank you. I have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 10B, the annual approval of the Title I plans.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll now take a motion and a second to approve item 10C, the AT&amp;T settlement agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. There we go, all right. Comments or questions? Seeing none on the court, oh, Ms. McCullough? Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah. I'm not blindsiding him. I sent questions in earlier, so I just had some real concerns as to how we got through here, and how I thought it would be important for you to have a conversation, or an explanation, or tell us what happened. Why is it we're paying $344,000, which is a whole lot less than 750, 744, but...
And that's payment. What we'll do is, we'll get 70% of that is eligible for reimbursement on the E-rate process, so the net expenditure of that is a little over $100,000. When we had this with our telco lines, we had some old Centrex lines out there, that we brought forward a new contract back in, I believe, May of 2015. The intent was to port some of those Centrex over to our new contract that we're looking at with the SIP network, where some of those were not included in there. We did not realize that they were not included in there until we received the bill, the September 5 bill, which Finance received on September 11, that stated that that initial two months of July and August was about 340-some thousand dollars. And then, once that was brought to our attention, we started working with AT&amp;T, trying to figure out what happened, of why these contracts, why these lines were not included in our old contract, or ones that we discontinued. Why weren't they in there? So, we worked on that. Once we realized that AT&amp;T wasn't going to budge, they weren't on the new contract, we brought the Centrex contract to the board on October 15. These are lines that we were currently using. They just went off the contract rate to a higher rate. AT&amp;T was trying to put them up there for those four months, the 744,000. Said, no, it should be back down here to about the 300,000, where we're at right now. We filed a dispute with them. They weren't going to budge on it. We got our E-rate consultant involved with this. They talked to the VP of AT&amp;T. Through past practice, they would sit there, even if it was under contract, that little lapse in coverage, where they would backrate it back to the contract rate. So, basically, we would have been covered under our contract rate, but AT&amp;T wasn't going to budge on that. But then, after our consultant got involved with that, then through some of the talking with them, they decided to bring it back down from that 744, back down to the 300-some thousand dollars out there. So, these are actually lines that we were using. They were just off of a different pricing, contract pricing out there.
So, if I'm understanding this, we entered into a new contract with Centrex. We didn't include these lines.
We entered into...
So, we were still using AT&amp;T lines, and we had to pay for them during that time?
No, this is all AT&amp;T lines. The Centrex is the type of service that we were having. We had a lot of those services out there. We were kind of migrating to a different type of service in May, and we were going to port or bring these over into that, and that not all of them got brought into that, like we thought, anticipated. So, it was still AT&amp;T service. It was either using a Centrex line, or with our new SIP lines out there.
So, who writes up the, I guess I'm kind of looking for a process piece here. Who writes up the contract to make sure that those lines are included? Where did that fall down happen?
It was just from my department, and the IT department, with Mr. Weisman and Mr. Hall, us three. We're the ones that were looking at that, at that time, back in 2015, and working with our sales rep from AT&amp;T.
And then, going to the E-rate person, our, what did our legal counsel suggest that we do to deal with this process?
We did not discuss this, the process we're going out there. We were using our E-rate consultant, and that's why we pay them. They've been doing this quite often with us, and we were going through the process with them.
So, I'm understanding that legal was not involved at all, or was not even
No, they were not.
Aware that that was happening. So, that's a process question, too. So, current, so we have to pay for the use of these for that period of time, and you've just negotiated it down, and you're saying that 70% of that will be refunded to us?
Based off the E-rate, just like all our telcos.
From who, the state?
No, this is from the USAC. If you sit out there from, if you look at the bills that you pay for your individual phone bills and telephone, there's a little tax that you pay on there, it kind of gets put into a pool. So, that pool is divvied out there based, initially, it was based on free and reduced lunch out there, but we kind of qualify for a little bit higher. So, based on that, you get reimbursement from your internet connectivity, for your fiber networks, your cell phones, your telecommunications services, and then also, every two years out of five year, you can get reimbursement for switches, routers, wireless access points, and things like that. So, it's a combination out there from the universal service, it's USAC, USAC, that they put this in a pool, and you can apply for those E-rate funding, and get reduced telco services out there. The whole intent from it, when they started this up, probably, I don't know, 15 years ago, was to provide internet connections to schools. So, that's why, when we have our fiber connections, which the board has approved a couple of these before, we're getting anywhere from 80 to 90% of our data connections, or our internet connections reimbursed, based off of this USAC, this E-rate process.
And we've, all the money we've applied for, and been told we're going to get, we get?
Mm-hmm, yep. They keep stating that, oh, they might change it, but we've been getting it. There's a couple services on a few things, that they're starting to decrease a little bit, but that's, I believe, on the cell phones. But that's very minimal, compared to all our other telcos. Our telco, we have about a million dollars a year that we expend out.
So, I guess, again, from a governance and process standpoint, how would we do it differently, so that we aren't in this situation yet?
Well, what we did back then, those finances came in, and actually, there was, in 2015, there was on the system, they were going to just pay that. Those bills back then, were, nobody was looking at them. They would come in, Finance would pay for them. We've changed that process out there now, that we have two individuals, one in my department, our operations planner, that looks at all our utility bills, works with our E-rate consultant, and then an individual in the IT department, to make sure that, when we get the bills in there, make sure they're per the contract, make sure the pricing is correct, make sure that when we give the bills to our E-rate consultant, to put in for the reimbursement on the E-rate, that we're only including eligible services out there, because there's other services that don't qualify that, for that reimbursement. So, we've had that in place for a little bit over a year right now, that we're actually looking at these contracts, making sure that, okay, we approved the rate here, here's the bills that come in, and making sure they're lined up. Because we're also finding that individuals were just adding some phone lines in the district, and we didn't know about them, so.
But if you back up, that's what you do after you have a contract, and you're paying the bills, and you're seeing that you're, but if you back up yet another step, putting together a contract, to making sure that we have the right things, and not depending on a vendor who we're leaving, or what, you know, the AT&amp;T piece, it sounds like they didn't give us a complete assist.
Yeah, as we look at that, part of this is when we started looking at this. Now, we know exactly what's out there. We know where our lines at. We've got them tracked out there. So, as we migrate off there, with the Centrex lines, it's kind of off, because we've reduced it. We had probably about 3,000. We're down to under 900 now. We're actually going to be down probably about 600. So, as we look at our big things out there, with our fiber connections, our SIP net work, our ISDN, everything with our telco, we have those all detailed out there, exactly what we want. So, we know, moving forward, you know, this has been a process that we were working on the last two years, to make sure we document every single thing that we have out there, even the phone lines that we have in an elevator, that when we start creating a contract for a new service, when time comes up for that, that we have everything documented, and we know exactly, okay, this is what we have, this is what we want, and crosswalk those for when we put that out there for the RFP on the 470.
Because that's a teacher we just lost.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments or questions? Now, the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 10C, AT&amp;T settlement agreement.
Mrs. McCullough?
Don't have a choice. Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Now, I'll take a motion and a second for item 10F, which is the MOU for educational leave for the professionals.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second, Mrs. McCullough. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCullough.
I actually pulled this, just, I wanted to highlight the fact that we're supporting the development, professional development of our internal staff. What this does is it allows a pair of professionals who are working on their teaching degree, to go ahead and do their student teaching, and that we, as a district, will pay them their salary while they're student teaching, as well as giving them their benefits, and with a request that they come back and then work for the district. So, I just think it's a win-win for both parties, and I think we're putting our money where our mouth is, and saying we really do want to develop our internal and local talent when we can. So, I'm excited about this prospect.
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
This is not direct on this, but it's part of the same picture, from my point of view. Appreciate the newspaper highlighting individual that was on the pathway to, for the teaching, and want to say that overall, really, high marks to the district for understanding that we need to grow our own talent, and that it's important for us to put effort behind that. So, similar to what Mrs. McCullough said, I think we've got a number of good things going, so I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 10F, the MOU for educational leave.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We are now under the closed session consent agenda items, including the following appointments. The appointment of Laura Corkus as a 10-month elementary dean, the appointment of Kimberly Ward as a 10-month elementary dean, the appointment of Dennis Schwab as a 10-month middle school dean, the appointment of Cynthia Sims as a 10-month middle school dean, the appointment of Michelle Lara as a 10-month elementary special ed administrator, the appointment of Trevada Redman as 11-month elementary principal, the appointment of Jonathan Gates as a 10-month high school assistant principal, the appointment of Mercedes Brain as a 12-month director of talent acquisition, the appointment of Jim Kerplanus as a 12-month director of building and grounds, the appointment of Brian Doring as a 12-month dean of fine arts and physical education, the appointment of Kimberly Verborn as a 12-month elementary special ed administrator, the appointment of Maria Tredo French as a 12-month director of allocation, appointment of Jennifer Maisak as a 12-month director of MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support, the HR organizational report and addendum. And unless otherwise noted, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases, in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities with the prior written permission of the principal. Students 4092, 4093, 4094, 4096, 4097, 4098, and 4099 are expelled for the entire 2017-18 school year. Student 4095 is expelled for the first semester of the 17-18 school year, and the following students received EIAs 1007, 3285, 3288, 3294, and 3311. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? None, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report, and Dr. Bosberg is here in the superintendent's seat. I'm sure you have a 30-minute plan, presentation.
Well, there you go, okay. Not quite 30 minutes, so I'll keep it brief. I know we have a short agenda, and I don't want to extend it. Thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to highlight some positive things that happened in our district. I think sometimes we go fast, and we're a large district, and we don't stop to recognize some good work. So, many of you probably saw the extensive media coverage we received on a national level, about what's happening with our athletics programs. And I've been interviewed a few times in those reports, and I did try to give board members credit, and sometimes the reporters want to do that, sometimes they don't, but I wanted to acknowledge, I think there's five board members here, that voted on that policy change back in 2011, am I right? Are there five of you there? And I wanted to acknowledge the board...
Maybe three, maybe three. Jude, me, and Tim.
Yeah, three.
Okay, Mike wasn't here?
Time goes fast when you're having fun.
Okay, Mike, okay, all right, there's three. I'll acknowledge the three that have been here for six years. And I want to, I want to point out that that was, that was a leap of faith with the new administrative team, that you had to, you know, make the paradigm shift, to look at athletics as an intervention, and not a privilege. And that was, that was a different way to look at it, and we've, we've got great results. But it starts with a board policy, and the board working with administration to make those changes. And I know, on the surface, it looked like a lowering of standards, and we had those conversations, I don't need to rehash those, but, but...
No, you get to say, "I told you so."
We did not, we did not lower standards, and I think, I think we've done some great things with our, with our kids. I also know, I want to thank Mr. Parker and his leadership, and the A.D.s and the coaches, because the policy is half of it, and then the people is the other half. And you have to have the right people with the right intent. And we've always, our coaches have always been viewed as teachers, and many of them are teachers. And they are reinforcing the values and the soft skills that we need our students to develop, to be productive citizens in our society. So, they do that in athletics, and our, getting the right coaches is crucial for that policy to work. And our coaches do a lot of things in the summer they're not paid to do. I'm aware of coaches that are driving kids to college visits, all the way to North Dakota. So, they're, they're great role models for our kids, and I'm glad that we have more kids exposed to those role models. So, thank you, board members, for supporting that. And I know, the three board members that I'm highlighting did not run for board to worry about athletics. So, we are, trust me, we are making progress in other areas. And I want to remind you that we have two schools that were nationally recognized, in the Washington Post, for their academic rigor, Auburn and Guilford, and that's a testament to their staffs and the leadership in their schools, getting kids exposed to the most rigorous curriculum that we can offer in high school settings. So, there's progress there. Only 12% of the schools in the country have made that list. So, that's, that's the elite company. And we are working on things that we think bring, could bring national recognition, things that have been nationally recognized. And two things that some of you, most of you are aware of, the PAR program. And that was, that's been profiled in the New York Times, not from our district, but from another district. We replicated that model very closely, and we're getting very similar results. So, I'm excited about that. Our peer assistance review program, and a new program that we're working on, that I'm excited about, is our continuous improvement systems to monitor what schools do. Those of you that have a manufacturing background and a hospital background, you're familiar with the lean Six Sigma-type systems. And we've, we found a school district that was profiled in the New York Times as well, Menominee Falls, Wisconsin. We are bringing in trainers to start some of that work this summer. We've, we've made a couple of visits to their school district, visited classrooms, and they're getting great results. And I'm excited to announce that we have a PD event, August 7. Capacity is 80, I think, 80 people, and it was filled voluntarily. Nobody was assigned to it. It was filled in six hours. The PD event filled up in six hours. So, there's a great demand for that work, and I'm excited about that. And those are the academic things that we're working on, that hopefully, they'll never be on ESPN, but maybe we can get on some other national news network, so.
Discovery Channel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to committee reports. Mrs. McCullough, the education committee report.
I think leap of faith is interesting. Yeah, and we, and we were all about academics, and we just were like, had to trust you. So, it was, and I did want to say thank you, and you were right, and it's always a pleasure to be... to be in the spotlight for a good reason. So, ed committee did not meet and not, is not meeting in July. Our next meeting is August 15th in this room at 5:30.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins, finance committee.
Finance committee has not met and will meet next in this room on August 7th at 5:30 PM.
Mr. Connor, the operations committee report.
Operations committee did meet. We met last night in this room at 6:30 and our next date is going to be at 6:30 on Tuesday, August the 11th. We had a number of items summarized that will be coming to the board. One is that there are going to be some changes for Barber School and there's going to be some related expenditures around changing the library. And there's a couple of other things that were presented and the committee was very much in favor of what was presented. And the highlight for me, and I said this to the teachers last night, this is really a result of having a successful program at Barber on the immersion program and having a group of teachers and administration, a principal who really listened, worked together. This was not easy to work out, so I'm personally very pleased with this and I know how hard they worked, so really a tip of the hat to everybody involved in that and the fact that it's so successful. They have, I think they said roughly 100 kids on the waiting list, so there's a real academic demand for that program. So, good job there. There was a, an update on the custodial contract and the progress with Airmark. You can see the notes, but essentially, Airmark held a, for recruiting for jobs and I think we're short, I want to say 27 was the number. So, right, pardon? Okay, so 31, yeah. So, we're a little short, so we expect, there could be some impact, but they're bringing in equipment, they have some new techniques for cleaning and I have asked them to come back for metrics to ensure that the reasons we changed contractors was really all around quality and commitment. And I think that the commitment from the staff to come back with metrics so that we can follow this on a regular basis and have what I consider to be relevant conversations with the teachers and staff. So, was pleased with that, although we can expect, I think, potentially some delays on that. The next item, there was an update on the Walker RFP with the city. To remind everybody, last year roughly at this time, we had neighborhood meetings with the building disposition because Walker is closing. And in those meetings essentially, the majority, about 75% of the neighborhood wanted to go with the Park District, but there was a vocal minority of about 25% who said they'd like to have an extended time to see if anybody could use, have a good funding plan and a plan of use and that the best way for us to do that was to enter into an agreement with the city, which we did. So, the city put out an RFP for the use of Walker and the results of that are, after this whole time, that there were no answers to the RFP. So, we will go back to the neighborhood because we committed to do this if appropriate and give an update to the neighbors so that they understand. Mr. Schmidt said he will go back to the Park District and let them know the disposition and we'll come back and get a status on that, I think in a month is roughly what we said. So, that should be tied up so that we can get moving with the disposition at Walker. We also talked about, there's a land sale update for what was originally three acres, which I think is going to be more like four and a half for the use or the bid to sell land out by Jefferson and that's on pace. There is some work being done on the plat because we need some specifics for the bid. So, we'll get back in roughly a month, status on that. There was an update on the facilities master plan, which is going to pace and I think by roughly this time next year, I want to say roughly 85%, I think is the number, will be committed or spent by this time next year. Do you remember the number?
Right now we have approximately 68.7% committed.
As of today.
Yes, and that's paid out there and that's 173 million. We have 53 million that's in process, which is committed right now. So, once we get that, we anticipate, but the bulk of that 53 million will be paid out here over the next year.
Next year, so does, isn't that roughly 80% of the total?
It's going to be up there probably about, quick math, 220, 80, 80 something, 90%?
Is that 90%?
Almost 90%.
Okay, so by this time next year, we should be essentially either having had it done or committed funding, really for nine, for 90%. And unless my math escapes me, that's.
10% left.
10% left, but half the time. So, I think we're really, in terms of scheduling, we've done, I think, a good job. And one of the things I will share publicly is that the committee absolutely unanimously thanked Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Bailing, the entire staff, doing a fabulous job on this, had a schedule, under budget. And so, I just want to give them public credit that this did not come from me, this came from the committee who were very complimentary of the work being done, so, and even things like contingency, how that's been managed. So, I think overall I want to give really public kudos to the entire staff that's been involved with this for doing a great job and this being recognized by the community. You don't hear much in, in the public sector about being under budget and ahead of schedule, so that's, that's commendation there. The last item, and man, we just cannot talk about this enough, we did bring up air conditioning and so basically the long and the short of it is that the committee cannot wait until they hear the results in September when we readdress the air conditioning. So, that was our fun session last night, so hopefully we'll see all of you, oh, Mr. Schmidt, you had an update?
We did talk about last night that was very important is now it's a little bit over $250 million with the additional scope of work. With the additional scope of work for the new schools where we have the contribution of $600,000 from Winnebago County for additional land acquisition, we have $600,000 from the city of Rockford of additional land acquisition, potentially $200,000 in private donations out there for additional land acquisition demos and things like that. We have the addition of the water main extension out there requested by the city of Rockford, that's added scope in there, but they will have an IGA of paying for that. We have the $407,000 of contributions from the village of Cherry Valley, that's added the scope in there. If you remember, this is the berm and some of those other things. Plus, we also have another IGA out there for the additional water main work for Cherry Valley to extend it from the eastern edge of our property out to Perryville and they're paying for that. So, there's an additional $1,982,760 that we're adding into additional scope of work out here in the $250 million plan, so it's really 251,982,760. But that additional money, we're going to get revenue back through the various stages of the intergovernmental agreements that we have approved with the other municipalities.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCullough, or Mr. Rollins?
This is the second time I've heard mention of selling land by Jefferson, but I don't remember having any discussion about that. So, have we?
We've done it a couple of times at the Ops, actually three times I do believe.
Yeah.
Did you talk about a, maybe it was at the June board meeting that I missed, but I mean, I'm just, my question is, so Jefferson is our largest high school and we're apparently talking about selling land that's adjacent to it. You really, there's, you can't envision any way in the next 40 or 50 years that the district would possibly need to use that land?
No, we got over, I believe, 70 acres out there with Jefferson and this is the farthest corner. Right now it's an overgrown field. When we looked at there, it's, it's way kind of out in the north 40, if you want to talk about that. We'll present it, that will show you kind of what we're looking at, maybe three to four acres on the northwest corner of the property, kind of off of Samuelson Road. We have the path that we have out there, we have the, the area for the, the football field and the track, we have a couple baseball fields and all that. We do have a lot of land out there. We have a lot of land south of that building too, of that property, where we have a couple different soccer fields, plus we have the full soccer field on the other side of Rock Valley's little campus there that's in the middle of it, plus more on the south. So, we got a good chunk of land out there. Yeah, we, we feel pretty confident out there, this little three to four acre, little sliver out there where we don't use it anymore. It was actually open at one time, now it's overgrown with trees.
Okay. Mrs. McCullough?
So, now that Walker will be going to the Park District, will we return and revisit that? And we have $500,000 set aside for each of the schools. Did you, did you ever have an estimate on what the takedown on that building was, the demolition?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we've got.
Because I thought you had to have that for part of the whole.
Yeah, we have the estimate.
Yeah, we've, it's, it's under 500.
Yeah, we do have the estimate. We're thinking that.
That was done a while ago.
We have $4 million set aside and we think all our estimates are going to be about 3.8 million for all of that stuff out there.
Okay. So, that falls within there. And then the second piece is we had a speaker tonight who spoke to the naming of the new school. And so, I'm wondering if there is, in case anybody else wants to step up so that we might know what the process is for those who come forward with names, where that ends up going, what, is that a legal piece?
We have a board policy.
There is a board policy.
Yeah, we have to be dead two years, but it doesn't really indicate a process, does it?
Right, that's, if you recall, the building disposition, we said that we would hold public meetings for both schools and that was part of our entire intention is to have sessions out there and talk about the names, because I believe if I remember correctly, the actual approval of the name is through the board, but the intention was to go out to essentially the neighboring schools and get input on the names. So, that's, that was something we had talked about last year.
So, that if anybody brings them to the board at a board meeting, they will go to this committee? And we will contact, they will go to you and then that person or whoever brings forward will be contacted when that meeting occurs so that they can be there to talk about why they brought that name forward?
These are public meetings.
Yes. And I know that part, also part of our vote was that the board wished to have at least one of the schools named.
After Dr. King.
After Dr. King. So, keeping that in mind, it wasn't.
Not necessarily a new school, though the resolution states that at the end of the day, one school in the district will be named Martin Luther King.
But yes, that was one of the, so that's what I said, the building disposition, clearly that was part of the process that we would get public input.
King School, the current King School closes.
It's closed right now, we're actually.
Right, and they're moving into.
Washington.
And there has never been any conversation about that name change is part of this whole building disposition?
Part of that was moving that over to Washington. We sat there, there, we're taking, we're closing that building, moving the students over into Washington, so we're going to leave that as Washington out there because it's already a Washington Elementary School. Kind of like we did, they were, they were Washington neighborhood kids at one time and then we moved them over to King, so they were Washington Wolves at one time, I think it was Wolves. Then we moved them, the.
Believe me, I had kids who were at King, Washington, King.
Yeah, I know, so.
Yeah, we were ping pong ball.
Then we moved them to King, so then we called them King, now we're moving back Washington, so we're going to call them Washington.
So, if it's not a new school, what other schools will we be, will we be named?
Well, no, I'm just stating that's what the intent of the resolution says. One, it doesn't specify, I don't believe it specifically says the two new schools, it says a school will be named Martin Luther King.
I think the practical part of it, I might say so, is I think the intention was around the new schools, yes, that was absolutely the intention. The interpretation of the exact language is different, but clearly what we'll have is public meetings for both sites, including the schools.
Well, let me press for timing on that too, because I realize we have two years on one school and one year on the other, but if you're putting stuff inside the school and names on things and stuff.
We know this, yeah.
What is that, what is that timeline so people understand?
Well, what we're looking, we're looking at starting this up there in August and September of looking at the naming, we pretty much got to have a name identified by December because we've got to start doing school logos, the school colors and things like that, so.
Mrs. Holley.
All right, under the policy, there is a process that's identified and so students, parents, guardians, faculty, or community members may submit in a name. The person, of course, has to be deceased for a minimum of two years and have made a significant contribution to society. In addition, a petition with 50 signatures must accompany the submitted name along with background information. So, here we do have the background information, we don't have a petition with 50 names. And we'll contact former Superintendent Thompson to let him know the process as well as the policy. But it also indicates that the superintendent can also make a recommendation and that the board or the superintendent may appoint a special committee to investigate the particular case and report it back to the board, so, and make a recommendation in that regard. So, there is a process outlined in the policy. I don't believe that the process that you're recalling, Mr. Connor, is actually in any minutes. Ms. Prom is trying to look for that right now, but it's along the same thing, it really is getting public input and, and so it certainly.
Right, I don't know what the minutes were kept on the building disposition, so I can't.
We did do this for Thurgood Marshall School, same.
Yeah, so.
Correct.
Anybody else with their light on that needs to say anything?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Mrs. Board Member McCullough, we looked at the cost, our cost estimate for demolition of Walker, including abatement, contingency and everything was 545. Yeah, so we were under, I think, King was like 300,000, so Kevin looked it up for me.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Connor, on your report? All right, well now on to action items then, and our first one is the board policy 7.30, student assignment and intra-district transfer. Take a motion and a second to approve this policy.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCullough.
Okay, so my understanding is, and that I'm voting on a policy that allows if there's a student, prior to the start of this next school year, if there is a family who has a student in a high school, that, that student's sibling is allowed to come to that high school, even if it's outside their zone, at any point in time while that student is in the building. So, if that person is a freshman and when they become a junior, they have another sibling who is a freshman, we're going to let them come in. And then what happens if there's another sibling, so now they graduate and there's another sibling who's a freshman when the one we let in is a junior? Do they get to come too? I mean, I, I just.
We have that put in there, we're just looking at for one year. So, we're basically, since this is the first year that we're changing the zones out there, if somebody has a current sophomore that was in there last year, they're going to be a junior and they have a new student or a sibling coming in that's a freshman, that they could go to that school there too.
So, next year, if somebody is a junior and they have a sibling who's coming in as a freshman, they have to go to their zone school?
Correct. As it states right now in the policy, yes.
There's only one year?
Yes, correct.
But then we will provide transportation and we will do so for four years, henceforth?
Yes.
For anybody who this. And have you looked at numbers, just based on who we have in middle schools? What is the effect of this in terms of number of students, possibility who? Are we doing this for a few people? I mean, it's, it is a policy, so.
It's a policy, but we don't know of those individuals that may want to, we're making the assumptions, we don't know if they want to go to the other zone or not. We can look at those numbers. We initially, when we looked at it with our previous director of transportation, didn't feel that it was going to be any added increase out there in costs because we're going to have bus routes out there anyways going to these schools in that, in neighborhood. We're looking at the boundaries that were very close to each other, we're not looking way off. These are just where that line was, it's moving a couple blocks one way or another, a couple streets out there. So, we think that the impact is going to be minimal on there on the transportation cost for us.
There weren't any large shifts in boundaries, you're saying? I thought there was one big chunk.
The biggest shift was over, for Guilford and east, where you're coming down from.
Right.
That's the biggest shift. All the other ones are around the edges out there. That's the biggest shift, all the other ones are around the edges out there. So it's like in there, if you're sitting there and you live, say, over by Perryville and State Street, if you're sitting there right now, you're zoned to East High School, now that zone is going to be Guilford, if you're coming in there, that student, that's, that sophomore now, will be a junior next year, still going to be going to East High School, that individual freshman coming in there can elect to go with them, and then go off there to East High School. If not, they would go up to Guilford. So that would happen for a coup, two years, and then once that junior next year done, graduates, that freshman is now going to be the junior, we would still provide that transportation for those two years out there.
You're not coming back next year with another junior?
Yeah, because we have to look at it, even that freshman's coming in, say there's a freshman coming in, and that there's a freshman last year, that's a sophomore this year, that's in that area, we're still going to provide a bus route for that individual, so we felt that there's going to be enough bus routes in that area for those individuals, for the freshman and the sophomore, so.
It goes on and on, my friend.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? The coordinator then called a roll on the approval of Board Policy 7.30, student assignment and intra-district transfer revisions.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
No.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay. We're now on to new business, which includes one item that administration seeks to suspend the rules for the second reading for an immediate vote. Closing on the property is scheduled for August 3rd of this year, prior to the next scheduled Board of Education meeting, so this is real estate purchase at 626 South Third Street. So first, I'll take a motion, and a second to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion on that? Donna, of the coordinator, do you want to have a question on that?
Sure, just to explain again why we're, I'm not looking at it, we're doing this because we need the land quickly for, um, for the, is it actually part of the footprint?
The closing is before the next board meeting, right?
Yeah, we have the closing. It's going to be coming up before the next board meeting, and we sit there, and you know, with all the tenants that, and all the landowners, we'd like to get out of there, we just want to make sure that we can accommodate their schedules, because we were pulling them up there, but they want to close on August 3rd, and the next board meeting is going to be after that, so they couldn't move, they couldn't close.
We just came to an agreement with them this week, basically?
Yep, and a lot of these, that's what happens, I believe this one was actually, oh, let me check if that one's. Yep, we just came to an agreement with them on there for that, and they found a house.
What was the date you came to the agreement?
Yeah, it's on the copy here on Board Docs, it's black, redacted, so, one second, please.
Please.
We received that on the 30th, June 30th, so this is the next board meeting that I've come to.
Thank you.
Okay, the coordinator then called a roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion, and a second to approve the real estate purchase at 626 South Third Street.
So moved.
By Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion on that? Donna, the coordinator then called a roll on the approval of that purchase.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Attorney Holy is going to present our second item, which is a revision to Board Policy 8.30.
This was actually requested by Mr. Schmidt, but the policy revision is reflecting that vapor, vapor items, like e-cigarettes, that sort of thing, cannot be used on school district premises.
All right. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, this will be presented at our August 8th meeting, and for a vote. Did you want, did you have a comment on that? I don't think we have anybody that's.
No, no.
All right, okay.
Just the next one.
Oh, you're up for the next one, the real estate purchase for 528 Union Street.
This is a piece of property that, and we need to purchase over by the Kishawaki area for the new school project.
Where are we at with remaining items that?
How many parcels?
Yeah, how many, how many?
We have, including this one, it's 40, 43 that we have purchased, yeah, 43, yes, 43.
Out of?
So we need seven more houses or apartment complexes, and then house towing, so we're pretty close. We're, we're, we got a lot, and actually, we'll start doing some abatement and demo over there, here over the next two weeks, so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Schmidt on that? This will come up for a vote at our August 8th board meeting. Our next item is the update, I mean, the enrollment update by Mr. Robert Schwartz, who is our demographer.
Yes, for, let all the committee members, board members know, the district is, we sit there and we went through this school consolidation plan, and we're looking at changing our elementary and secondary zones, we decided to bring on Mr. Schwartz, who helped us with that, but on a yearly basis, over the next five years, as we're sitting there transitioning, to make sure that, what we're doing, our consolidation of our school footprint, that we make sure we're on track, because assumptions we made four or five years ago, we wanted to make sure when we build the new schools, the zones are correct, when we close down schools, that those new zones that we do create are actually, reflect the current enrollment and demographics of the area at that time. So based on this, he gives a yearly update, so I'll give it to Mr. Schwartz.
See, you brought your executive assistant with you there.
She's really the CEO.
Oh, okay.
All said.
Hi, my name is Lila Schwartz, and I'm going into 7th grade this upcoming fall. In order to come on this trip with my dad, I had to present tonight.
Okay.
My dad will be speaking to you about enrollment and demographics, development and enrollment projections. Also feel free to ask as many questions as stump him.
Okay.
And with that said, my dad will do the presentation.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
All right, thanks, Lila. She's seen a lot of this critical thinking that you were talking about, this last couple of days with the board meetings we've gone to, and she was commenting to me, she would never want to be a school board member, so.
Good, good.
So, kudos to you guys. So, again, we appreciate this evening to be able to share with you some of the information that you've received in a report. Since we were here last year, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, even though there's a lot of slides here, they're really for something for you to go back and understand what's happening in your district. If you really want to understand the entire plan that you have had some conversation about, Mr. Schmidt tried to answer some of those questions, the address locator on your website helps bring about that visual of what that actually looks like, so please refer to that. We've had a lot of good conversation with Winnebago County, there's been a lot of updates with some of the addresses, and so it really should be a good tool to understand that. So a little bit about how we can do what we have done for your district now, I'm going into this next season of the projections. A lot of data has been provided to us, a lot of information to understand what's happening with enrollment, demographics, and of course, what will occur with your forecast going forward into the future. Three things about your district, this is basically all you need to remember, besides Lila being the CEO, is your enrollment is going to have some slight decreases, and we'll talk about that in some slides going forward. Capacity, because of all of the changes that are occurring, and where the programs are, there's a lot of things, a lot of moving parts that we've been working with the district to make sure you have the right spaces with where these zones are, so there, there appears to be adequate capacity at all levels with all of the changes. We'll talk more about that as we get to the numbers. And then development, we see some different developments, some infill developments, we see a lot of tear downs, a lot of that related to property acquisition, to, to update some of the schools here, right? So those are the three key things with the district. We started out with these next few maps, the district boundary, the purple line, you can see the city limits, we break the district into these elementary zones, and then here I have the next few slides of what happens with those elementary zones, the middle school attendance areas, the high school attendance areas, ultimately creating these planning areas, where we have a little over 900 of them, where we're tracking enrollments, demographics, and development opportunities, to be able to know what happens with enrollment change. You'll see that in some of these maps coming up. If we zoom into some of these planning areas, you can see where the parcels are with the gray lines, you can see the green lines of the planning areas, the dots represent the students, where there's larger dots, they're more towards seniors, the smaller dots are towards the kindergarten students, you'll see a lot of these households have multiple dots, because there's multiple children in those households. So again, the visualization of the data that goes into our model. The other key thing is, this isn't just saying because there's an increase or decrease that we've seen over the last eight or nine years of your student data, that that will translate moving forward. This is a statistical model, based on what's happening in each of these 900 or so planning areas, that are based on, is it single families, is it mobile homes, is it duplexes, is it apartments? All of them have different yield rates. These different components that go into it, for instance, if we have 2,800 ninth graders, what happens to them over time, as they become a senior? External growth who's moving into the district? Kindergarten change, so we start seeing more kindergartners, is there fewer kindergartners? The economy drives a lot of this, what's the affordability of homes, and so on, so these are some generalizations about what's happening in the model for each of those 900 or so planning areas. Won't read each of these bullet points, but what we have to understand is, there's a lot of dynamic things happening in each of these 900 planning areas, that are driving what we potentially will see for the number of first graders, or eighth graders, sophomores, whatever that is, in each of those 900 or so planning areas. We look at some of the census data to understand where they may be estimating, we'll see futures zero to four-year-olds out into 2021. On this map, the orange and red areas are the greatest density areas, where we would see those zero to four-year-olds, as we radiate down to the blue, there's, there's less density. We also look at females, and remember last year I made the joke of the 15 to 59-year-olds, we don't advocate 15-year-olds having kids, or 50-some-year-olds, but again, looking at that cohort, so we can understand where females are, where the zero to four-year-olds are, we know there's some changes with some demographics, we know that there's potential for having fewer children in households in certain areas of the community, so understanding where the females are, where the children are, this plays into those 900 or so planning areas. We look at this past school data, this helps give you an understanding of where your largest, where your smallest classes are, why we label this the pig and the snake effect, as we start seeing some of the natural changes that occur, as we see some of the larger grades move into the high school, you start to see some differing impacts of what enrollment is in any of these particular levels. Another way of looking at that data, as shown on this chart, is that cohort change. So when we look at the eighth to ninth grade, you see we have an average, we show you a three-year average and a three-year weighted average, we have about an 850 student increase on average from eighth to ninth grade, so that's those private and parochial homeschool kids coming in to the district, but then, as they go from ninth to 10th, 10th to 11th, 11th to 12th, you see some decreases that are happening. I'll come back to this, because we see this as well in our in-migration and out-migration. So there's some natural things that are happening with your enrollment, and again, we have to make sure that we're following what those changes could be.
Could I jump in with a question?
Absolutely.
I did see all the information about the in-migration and out-migration, but when we see these decreases in class sizes at the upper grade levels, how much of that is actually because of dropout, the dropout rate? Do we have any idea?
Now, we have not correlated this to the dropout, that's something a little bit different. This is just actual headcount students, as they change from grade to grade, are a lot of these students maybe moving out of the district, and when we talk about this in the out-migration, you'll see there's a lot of students moving out of the district, so some of that is in these numbers, so the dropout rate's different than this, and that's tracked a little bit differently, that I'm sure administration can provide some of the nuances to that.
Just using that one chart, so if you take our sixth grade class in 2010, 2011, was 2,048, and we graduated 1,478, so we lost close to 600 kids, I mean, it's, it's an issue that I'd, I'd be interested in knowing the answer. How much of that is out-migration, and how much of it is dropout? Do we?
I think he's asking administration.
Yeah, I'm asking somebody. Does anybody have any idea?
I can't calculate it off the top of my head, but I can tell you what our graduation rate is, and it's 68%, so that's calculated off the freshman cohort. The numbers I see in this slide indicate to me that that includes freshman credits, not freshman chronological, so I'm, I, I think there's, obviously the dropout is a factor, kids not graduating is a factor in the numbers.
And I'm, and I'm bringing this up, because I do think it's a factor, I think it's a major factor, and so when we think about, in terms of losing population, and losing population within the school district, one of the ways to reverse that trend is obviously to fix our graduation rate, and if we are successful in moving the needle on our graduation rate, hopefully we'll be able to reverse some of these population losses within the school district.
Yep, Ms. McCulloch, you had a question?
Your mind goes back farther. These 900 groups, that's from, I tried to stop as you were going through, the detailed planning areas, how did, how did those get determined? And there are the dark green lines, right? I just don't see 900 of them when I, when I zoom in on mine, so.
If you can see 900 when you zoom on that, you are awesome.
Yeah. Well, that's not to say I'm not awesome, just because.
You're awesomer. The green, the planning areas were broken out, was we looked at the legal descriptions that come from Winnebago County, for instance, and so we're looking at some of the subdivisions, so how things are plotted, we're looking at the zoning to know, are they apartments, are they duplexes, are they single-family homes, to be able to make these delineations, but it all first started with the district boundary, and then the existing attendance areas for elementary, middle school, and high school, and then we're drilling down that much farther into the type of development that's occurring in the community, to be able to, again, track what's happening with enrollment, demographics, and then how we forecast.
It's a geographic area, and it's not based on a number in that little, each of those little areas, it's, I, I just don't understand how they were developed, and the numbers that are on that map, like where it says 730, 733, they're actually, each are numbered?
Those are unique IDs, now, those are unique IDs, so that we can track what is occurring in that particular area at any given point in time.
And just to clarify, we have 900 of these areas, planning areas, in our district, that's what you've identified?
Correct.
That's not for the county, that is for our district.
That is what RSP created, to be able to track how we do our enrollment forecast, and honestly, why we're as accurate as we are.
Thank you.
Good question.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
Migration, so let me move over. So interesting thing about migration, we're showing you the last three years in the bullet points here, and so you can see that, going back to 1415, there was just under 2,300s, just a little bit under 2,300 in 1516, but now we're over 2,400 in 1617. So these are students that, in the previous year, were not attending a, or receiving a service from Rockford Public Schools. So you can see 2,400 students this last school year in 1617. We look at this out-migration, these are students that were in the district, but in the next school year, not receiving services. And so, when we look at these numbers, let me kind of give you a breakdown. In 1415, we had of the enrollment in 1415, about 19.5% of them were either new or left the district. We go to 1516, that increased to about 20.3%, and then here in 1617, it's about 21.6%. I'm giving you those percentages, because like every district we work with, there's a high transitivity of students coming and going. And it's not getting lower in the districts we work with, they tend to get higher. So, this makes the challenge in why these planning areas are so significant in how we do our forecasting imperative in being accurate. Because if we didn't break it down to that small level, we wouldn't understand to that detail of the number of housing units that are in each of those planning areas, the number of kids at any particular time, whether they're kindergarteners, fifth graders, or so on. And again, the dots represent where they're at, or where they were, or where they are, depending if we're looking at the in-migration or out-migration. So, you can see it's all over your district, not just one particular area. Because of those 900 planning areas, we're able to track what change looks like. So, these next series of maps are showing you where there's an increase or where there's a decrease. The orange is an increase, the green is a decrease, and the darker the orange, the greater the increase, the darker the green, the greater the decrease. And so, there's some things that you start to notice in this, particularly as we go west of the river, we see a lot of green. Now, what I want you to understand is when we see a lot of green or we see a lot of orange, that doesn't always mean it's going to be green, or it's always going to be orange. It's just what we're seeing over the last five years, actual kids on this particular map, that we saw back five years ago to now, we're seeing fewer kids or more students.
Does this include charter school?
Nope, this would just be your K-12 students with what we're forecasting. So, there, so if we see, if we see a green, maybe some of those kids are factored into the out-migration students that may now also be getting charter school and so on.
I don't believe it includes early childhood students either, right?
No, no, early childhood, just K-12 students.
So, I did just want to piggyback on Mrs. McCulloch's question. So, the charter schools technically are our schools, but I want to be clear, so you're excluding the charter schools from this analysis?
Yeah, with the data sets that we have, these are students that would be attending the core buildings that we have in your inventory, receiving services.
Okay. So, just looking at the timeframe that you've got here, and I know this is why Mrs. McCulloch was asking the question, just for, you know, other people, that's about the time we were establishing charters. We've got three charters, and they sort of rolled up grade over grade over grade. So, people were leaving for that period, for this exact period of time, people were leaving the district schools, going into the charter schools, and that was happening disproportionately in some of these areas on the west side, so that could account for some of that.
Absolutely. And I think that's, the key thing too, is as you see something new, we see students maybe choosing that, parents choosing that for their students. But when we look at the actual raw data, we go back to the in-migration of students, we can see that we have more new students in 1617 than what we saw the previous two years. So, I think some of the perceptions, some of the things that the district are doing with programs and whatnot, with the buildings, may, we may have kind of hit that cusp where we're starting to attract more of the students that are in the community to attend your schools. So, relevant points, and we're always trying to factor this latest data into it. All right, I was at the count change. Right, the next map, because I know some people are statistical gurus, what we've done here is try to show you something, since the planning areas, these 900 planning areas are a different size, we quantified it by a square mile. So, if each of these were a square mile, what would that yield rate look like? Because again, each of these planning areas are yielding a different number of students at different grades. So, again, just a way for you to look at this, the orange and red areas have the greatest density, as we move down to the green and blue, less dense areas. This map is very similar to what's on page 25, but it's, instead of the, the actual count, it's this change with the square mile verified into how we look at the planning areas. This map here shows you with where the students are based on their geocode, so their actual address. The red areas are where we have the greatest density of students. This kind of was the, on the surface, when we got into these assignments and how we were making some of these changes for the elementary buildings, the new buildings coming online, where the special programming is, this was one of those tools to help understand where the students are, and how does that relate to how we create these assignments. So, a little bit about development, I won't read all of these bullet points, but they're all very important in understanding how we're seeing some of these changes. The key factor moving forward is having affordable housing and quality affordable housing. We know that if you have students that are coming back from college, they now tend to have more debt than any of us who have graduated from college, meaning they have less ability to buy some of the housing inventory. If you've been following some of the housing stuff like we do, you would have realized last week, they made a change in how much debt you can have. It went from 45% to 50% on debt that would be related to student loans, credit cards, and so on. Again, trying to, to increase the number of people who would be eligible because of the debts that they are carrying, not being eligible for homes. So, there's a lot of these things that we're tracking, whether it gets into the price for fuel, the general economy in Rockford, the state of the economy of Illinois, all of those things start to factor into what we see for each of these 900 or so planning areas. This is baseline data on this particular graphic that's tracking what we're seeing with enrollment change, which is the red line, the green line, which is population change, and then the blue line, which is the certificate of occupancies that are occurring from year to year. Basically, we see very little new certificate of occupancies that have been happening over the last few years. The census is indicating the population is decreasing, and what we've been seeing is mixed results with your enrollment. And that gets into some of this charter school, the out-migration, in-migration, all of these different things. So, again, just some baseline data of how these three elements kind of correlate and help illustrate why we see the future that we're indicating we may see for your district. So, getting back to a lot of this data, this is probably one of the cooler pieces of information that you would want to refer to, because we go to that 2,010, 11 row, go all the way to the right, you see that yield rate of .33. What that means is for every 100 units, we had about 33 K-12 students back in 1011. If we follow that column all the way down to 1617, it's had a slight decrease to where it's about 32 students for every 100 units. You can see that same breakdown for the elementary, middle school, and high school. And you can see then, when we go to that middle row titled total units, basically, very minimal change in the number of units that we're seeing. So, a lot of this is demographics that are at play with, with the data that you see. So, we also look...
A unit is a household.
Yeah, this would be for every unit, every household, so when we get into apartments, single family, so yes. So, you could consider that like a household. We also look at your median home value, so this map illustrates where we see the most affordable or the least affordable homes. The most affordable are going to be the blues, where we get into the least affordable, that's going to be the oranges and the reds. So, this is probably like last year's, not a surprise to where you see those particular pockets. We look at where there has been activity, so when you look at those few number of units that have been issued over the last few years, that's where we focus when we do our tour each year. We try to see what type of activity is happening there and whatnot. So, this just, again, gives you a geographic reference to where those elements are. From that information, along with zoning, future land use, we create these current or potential areas where we might see developments, and we've categorized that as the green is what likely is happening now and could continue to happen through the next five years. The yellow is hopefully at five years, and likely before 10 years, and the purple is more like out at the 10-year timeframe. The caveat to all of this is there has to be a desire for whoever owns the product, or, or the lands, and the product that they're building has a market for the community to consume. So, again, we see very minimal developments, some could happen, and we think as we see some of these new buildings come online, we're going to see some more infill development. We'll see some more development potentially start to come online out towards the south and east of your district boundary. So, we get into enrollment projections. Sorry, I wasn't 100%. We get to the district with what we forecasted for 1617, 99.9% accurate. You can see that accuracy of what we have at the elementary, 99.9%, middle school 99%, high school 98.7%. This is the value of those 900 planning areas. This is how, when you're making some of these changes, whether it's your transfer policy, or the assignments that are happening at the high school, middle school, elementary, the planning for the new buildings, it all goes back to some of these numbers. Some of the things that we're working on with the district is to get more at the students that will be attending the buildings. Because there's a lot of change with the programs, with the TBE, TPI students, special education, all of that, and so there's a lot of things that we're working on to be able to assist what that may mean, so you make the best decisions with your staffing at the building level. This graphic here illustrates what the past enrollment was for elementary, which is the red, the middle school, the blue, the high school is the green, the purple line is the aggregate of those three. As we move to the right with those pastel colors, that represents our likely RSP projection for each of those elementary, middle school, and high school. And what we are showing is that at the elementary, there's going to be about a 1.5% decrease in your enrollments. At the middle school, it's going to increase by almost 3%, and at the high school, it's going to decrease by about 2%. So, overall, for the district, when we get out to 21, 22, it's less than a 1% decrease of students from what you had in 1617. So, very stable enrollments in spite of the increase in the number of students that are either coming into the district or leaving the district. That's an important point. So, with that, we have some different key considerations, and I just want to hone in on really the bullet points that says utilize the web address locator. If you have any questions about what is happening with the boundary assignments, use that web tool. I believe now it's ADA compliant, so you can be able to find out with a specific address as you enter it in, how does that change in relation to that particular address? The other thing is with the two new elementary buildings opening up, those are going to start getting factored into some of the things that, that we're working on, and what that may mean for enrollments at each of those buildings. One last thing that Lila will close us out on.
I'll sum up the key points from the presentation. There's a slight decline in enrollment in the next five years. Numerous program options for students creating a difference between reside and attend. RSP recommends that the district continues with its program where we analyze enrollment, demographics, and forecast your enrollment, so that you can continue to make great decisions for your students.
Great job.
Great, and if you have other questions or comments, we would be happy...
Any other questions or comments from the board? Great job. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any other further comments or agenda recommendations for the board for tonight? If not, I'll take a motion that we adjourn.
The move.
Second. Mr. Segal, second. All in favor, say aye. Full safety, we are adjourned at 8:39. Thank you.